Twenty-four, city of Trinidad, council meeting. And let's begin with the plan.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I wanted to just point out that normally if we had a closed session, it would be the report would be following the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have the closed session at the end. In fact, we are going to eliminate that closed session because the council met yesterday at 5:00 p.m., September 23rd at 5:00 p.m. And the report out from that, this was a meeting about staffing and hiring. And so the outcome, and I will ask the council to comment if I miss anything. But given our current staffing levels and workload, the council agreed to move from an annual to a month-to-month contract for our current city manager, Eli Naffa, while searches under way for a replacement. And new candidates or candidates have been identified for the council, for the city manager position, and the council will be doing interviews, conducting interviews next week. And then in addition, the council will be interviewing prospective chief plant operators for our water plant in the next one to two weeks. So we do have candidates for that as well. So the closed session was really about reviewing resumes, identifying candidates, and then setting up a process by which we will do interviews. Any other comments on that from the council or staff?
Very good, thank you.
All right, so then moving on with that, then I'd like to get the council's approval for tonight's agenda or to mention any changes we'd like to see. All right, and no changes, seeing no changes to the agenda, then I will go to public feedback on tonight's agenda. If there are any questions or comments. And it can include, by the way, the questions or comments about the closed session, and we'll answer to the best of our ability. Jen, has your hand raised? I believe that's just the cursor, you guys.
The cursor.
Yeah. It's got, it's a little hand cursor, but it errors on us sometimes. But if I'm wrong, you know, let me know, so. All right, and I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so tonight's agenda is approved. Next is the council reports and committee, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead again. So not getting excited. Approval, approval of the minutes. This is next. And we have three sets of minutes tonight. We have May 28th, June 11th, sorry, four sets, July 9th and August 13th. And I think I'm going to batch those up, if that's okay, rather than go individual. Is that okay, staff?
Except that I'm going to have to recuse myself from one of them because I wasn't here to assess.
Okay. Okay, in that case, we'll do one at a time, so. I think we'll have to do that then, one at a time.
Well, actually, if you want, you can do the three and then do the one separate check.
July 9th is one I need to use.
And you have to recuse.
The third.
Yeah, okay. So we can do approvals with recusals. And, and are there any edits to any of the minutes? I did not have any, I can add to it, so, okay. All right, are there any public comments or questions regarding the minutes for those four months? All right, seeing then, I'll bring it back to the council. So what we'll do is we'll do, go ahead.
Yeah, I gotta move that we accept the May 28th into 11th minutes as they are. A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. But once you say it, I will.
Which one were you at on July?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip to the 8/13.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna approve the minutes for the 8/13/24.
All right. Katie seconded, and then all those in favor, and then Jack Tuttle is recused. And then all those in favor, ayes, so we'll have three, Jack West, Katie Breckovich, Cheryl Kelly, and Kumbi, and Jack Tuttle recused. And that's for August 13th. And then I'll move to approve for July 9th, 2024 minutes. And Katie will second, and then all those in favor would be?
Aye.
Yes. Yes, and Jack West is recused. Any questions, Gabe, we went through that pretty fast, does that make sense? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for that little bit of an administrative challenge there. All right, now we are on to council reports and committee assignments, and who would like to start?
Nothing to report out?
Okay.
It is tonight's meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The Animal Control, Animal Advisory Committee met just before this meeting. Very productive, everybody was there. We went through the county's Chapter Seven on vicious, dangerous, and nuisance dogs, and discussed some questions about whether it would work here in Trinidad and what was meant. And Megan Nims, who's an officer with Animal Control, was here to answer questions and very helpful. So we came up with a lot of good ideas, and mostly they've been postponed for the discussion next. No decisions were made.
All right, Josh?
Okay, I'm gonna do, I have just a couple of things from the HCon meeting that I thought were interesting. Last chance for eight was finally come to a final selection. It's a 1.1 mile, 2.1 to 2.5 million dollar tunnel that they have, they have decided that's the way they want to go. It's going, just some of the interesting things about it, it's gonna take three to five, they're gonna move three to five, I don't know, three to five million dollar maintenance costs on top of the 1.1 to 2.1 to 2.5 billion it will cost to construct. That's this time, but it's going to be six to eight years before construction will begin, or it will, six to eight years of construction, plus it won't begin until 2030. They have that many pieces yet to put together. It's going to move 1 million cubic yards of materials to move to clear the tunnel. It's gonna take out at least 40 trees and rocks loose and redwood trees. So it's gonna be a big deal, and it's gonna be way out there sometime. But it is, it's the first tunnel they've built over a decade. And they decided this is the one that will work for what they want, and it's by far the most expensive. And I think those things are right. Josh, is that sound right to you? Seemed like that was it. It was, they went for the fast. Also, Andy and all this, my understanding is now they are 60% of the columns are completed. And the number said 3,000 columns are going to be placed in that to put up at overpass. They said they're gonna finish it this year because they've worked through the layer. They're also gonna start on airport road area, we'll be winding 101 near the airport, and you can certainly see all the work being done now. The trail's looking there, and I think they may get it done in 2024, and they're gonna, I'm not, I wasn't quite sure, it was that they're gonna have the bridge done that goes over the slough, but the trail is going very well and very fast. And it will be, eventually it will be connected to the end of the overpass. So it'll be a nice, nice trail system when they finally get it done. Should be done very soon. So those are the reports from HCon.
Thank you. I had a quick one from the last meeting, I think it was August. We had done a G to G, a government-to-government meeting with the Rancheria, and evidently we're supposed to, I was supposed to report out, or the attendees were, and we did not. So I subsequently pulled my notes, and I'll just do a quick report out from that June 13th meeting. The agenda included the Animal Control, Animal Advisory Committee, I should say. And we discussed legality of dogs being off-leash below the mean high tide line. And there was some discussion, I guess, at the Animal Advisory Committee, that dogs could be off-leash when they were below that mean high tide line. And that is not the case. We've subsequently checked with our attorneys on that. And so we can implement some leash laws and enforce them. Well, we have leash laws today, we can enforce them. We discussed the Galindo Trail, discussion about the status of the closure. Nothing that isn't public information, which is that the Galindo Trail is not currently closed. It has been an issue that's come before the council in the past and will again. However, we discussed the Rancheria's interpretive center. I don't remember much about that. It was just that they're, they're doing one, I don't think they had the timeline yet. If Jackie's on the call, she can correct me when I'm done here because she may remember better than I on that, of course, and knows the latest timeline. We talked about the trail committee, specifically on the trail committee, we talked a little bit about some of the signage that the trail committee had planned. The Rancheria wasn't a fan of the, the, I don't know what you call it. It's like a pillar post or whatever. It's like a, it's kind of a plastic or, I don't know what you call it, to be honest. But anyway, we talked about those, they weren't around those. Yeah, so we talked about doing more of a stone-type marker, something a little more solid, and also something that would sit on the ground and wouldn't require digging and things like that. So we spoke about that a bit. The TAWS lawsuit, the lawsuit between the city and the Chirai Ancestral Society came up. There was no comment on that because it is a pending litigation. Rancheria, Jackie suggested that we check, that I checked the latest with the city attorney at that time to see if there were any updates, because she thought there might have been some, some new information. If we did do that, it was in closed session, and it's not reportable here. But it was not discussed in the G to G. We discussed the water rates. We updated the Rancheria on the public information about what the plan was for the water rates, which is exactly what we're gonna go through tonight. And I think that was it. I guess I'll pause there. Jackie, let me know if I missed anything from your perspective. I'm assuming not. And Jackie will jump in and let me know later if I missed anything. All right, so moving on, I attended the September 18th LAFCO meeting remotely while I was on vacation. We just went through the appointment of new city members, which included myself and Meredith Matthews, the mayor of Arcata. We heard an overview of LAFCO, and we had a public hearing on regarding the Orleans, the City of Orleans Community Water District system. They've had a lot of challenges, similar, you know, actually, I'd say more severe than what the City of Trinidad has, has experienced. They've had trouble with distribution, trouble with tanks, trouble with, you know, water quality. They're on, they've been on a boil water notice since 2021. So, yeah, so that is, it's pretty severe. So they're working on plans to address that. And that was something that was discussed at LAFCO. LAFCO is kind of interesting, because that's where also any kind of annexation topic will come up. And also anything about, for example, creating a fire district among various cities, that would also be something that would be discussed at LAFCO. So it's good to have a member of the city council on that board. I'm sorry, this is long, I was gone for a month and I queued up some stuff. Let's see, I do want to announce that the, the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, will be doing public trainings. We'll do one on October 13th, which will be CPR, so you can refresh your CPR certification, and also Stop the Bleed. And for those of you that don't know what Stop the Bleed is, that is just a really great training on if somebody gets hurt and has a really serious injury, how you can do immediately, you know, triage that and potentially save a life.
What was the date?
And that's October 13th, from noon to four here in the town hall. And we'll do lots of communication and promotion of that. The next one, very timely, as it relates to animals, is on November 10th. And this is animal for today. So we wanted to address, there are so many people who have animals, dogs, and cats and things, and in an emergency, or if your animal gets hurt, you don't necessarily know what to do. So we're gonna do a four-hour session on that on November 10th. So stay tuned for those. We'll have the CERT trailer here this Saturday, too, during the Fisherman's fees, if you want to get more information, joining CERT or attending any of these trainings. All right, I think that is it for me. Let me go to the public, if there are any questions or comments about anything that we've discussed in council reports.
Like you talk about things that wouldn't have talked about?
You can talk about things, so we're gonna go to items from the floor in a few minutes. So if there's anything that's not on the agenda, we'll call you up to the podium, you can, yes, follow up to your thoughts. All right, staff reports are up next. So we have the city manager and Humboldt County Sheriff's Department generally give our update here.
Yeah, and I don't see Lieutenant Call on line, but if he is, go ahead and speak out. Otherwise, I'm gonna get started. So the city manager's report, the A.CIP project is underway. Two crosswalks are being added on Edward Street, and one of them is at Hector and the other at Galindo. And we're also going to be expanding the pedestrian slash bicyclist area on the south side of Edward. So that it is a little bit larger and doesn't narrow towards the Van Wijk area. And then also, we are going to have some kind of delineators. Josh Wolf is here, will be talking about one of our agenda items. He can expand on that if someone needs that. It'll somehow be delineated that it is a separate area. Hopefully, vehicles that are traveling on Edward will realize that not meander into the pedestrian bicyclist area. The water tank and pipeline project connections are being made tomorrow. So water was shut off today going down to the Rancheria in the harbor and along Edward. And then tomorrow, individual connections will be connected along Edward. This is where we have moved the Van Wijk Street water main to Edward Street. And then the water plant, the discharge measurement, the last one we had is August 28th. It was 3.69 CFS. I had asked Todd Craver if he can do another one. He was gonna do one today, but I didn't receive it yet. So it might not happen until maybe tomorrow, but we can report on it in two weeks when our next council meeting. And we have three water plant employees who are scheduled to take the water exam in the next two months. School playground and track, representatives of the cities and the schools, joint power authorities. That's our insurance pool. Met with representatives of the city, myself, and then Elise, who's the principal at the school. Met August 14th. All parties agree that the playground and the track can be open to the public outside of school hours and when events are not taking place on campus. Access will not be available during summer day camp and if construction is taking place, which happened this past summer. For more, the, our city's insurance pool representative visited on September 19th, last Thursday, and we met with the school principal and walked to where the track is and where the several playgrounds are, so that he could visualize it. There have been, even up until today, we had someone stop by Town Hall and ask about the playground and access to it. The Van Wijk Trail, the insurance pool representative accompanied me, went to the Van Wijk Trail after meeting at the school. Measures, and this is the wording I'm using right now, is measures necessary to meet requirements for possible reopening the trail were discussed. So basically, I wanted to try to ascertain, you know, what can we do to reopen the trail from an insurance perspective? Meanwhile, we plan on having meetings with the Chirai Ancestral Society, with some council members, the Yurok Tribe, and the Trinidad Rancheria, which is on the agenda for today. Before the trail will be addressed by the city council. So hopefully, between what the insurance can do and what the other three respective bodies weigh in on, we can bring that to the council. And we are continuing our monthly meetings, the city planner and myself, with the California Coast Commission, to discuss the Van Wijk Trail. The Axolíbril Memorial Trail, the Chirai Ancestral Society, at our October 8 meeting, will present what's called the Axolíbril Memorial Trail Ancestral Re-Design. It's a report that's 30-some pages prepared by GHD. It comes up with a very interesting concept for the Axolíbril Memorial Trail, which would be a great improvement. Meanwhile, our city attorney is preparing the contract for RCA to remove vegetation, which I received today before our meeting. And that will redirect a portion of the trail to the beach. The consultation with the Trinidad Rancheria will take place before we any removal because of Policy 69. And also, representatives of the Chirai Ancestral Society will be present, present on site during the trail redirection and the vegetation removal, so that we make sure that we have cultural monitors and also the Chirai Ancestral Society representatives present, so that we want to make sure that the trail, and possibly our city engineer, would follow the proper path at the, to the base of the trail at the beach. And then SIRA, which is our California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, that's insurance pools. So when I met with our representative on 19th, he said that he had, that while he was in Humboldt County, he addressed potential scenarios that could include law enforcement services regionally, meaning possibly working with other law enforcement in the county. So in addition to the sheriff's office, possibly working with some of the other cities on coming up with a regional approach to law enforcement. So what I'm saying here is beyond legal aid, possible further law enforcement presence of personnel may become a bit. So hopefully, maybe we can end up having someone designated to serve Trinidad, who's a law enforcement officer from another area in the county that could be dedicated to us, and the same thing for Blue Lake, so that we could see law enforcement presence back on city streets in addition to the patrols that we have at the sheriff's office and in addition to Pacific Coast Security, which keeps providing us services and reporting to both Gabe and I on a regular basis. Almost every couple of days, we get a report on something that they have encountered. Certainly, any potential concepts, proposals that may arise from, will be brought to city council and to the public to be considered. But it would be a good improvement for the community if we can beef up our law enforcement. So that's all that I have. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to help answer them.
I just, real quick, do we have the Chirai Ancestral Society still willing to do a presentation on Axolíbril Memorial Trail on October 8th?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that'll be doing, so they'll be going over some of that 30-page GHD document, is that correct?
Exactly, yes, yes. Yeah, I had reached out to them and asked them if they wanted to do it at this meeting, or the 8th, and they said the 8th would work best for it.
Okay. Great, any other questions for you?
Just a quick one. If we have the school playground reopened, they keep the gates locked. How is that gonna, how are we gonna be able to keep that open for people of the U.S. side of the regular school arc?
Well, supposedly, they are gonna have the gates open now that we're beyond the day camp and the construction. But, you know, if you notice something, you know, bring it to our attention, and we'll talk with them to help. That's what they said.
It's the school's responsibility to get up for the talk.
Right, exactly.
And that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Any public comments regarding the staff report? Okay, seeing none, I will come back then to the council. Before I open to items from the floor, Jackie Carmison, House, House or Carmison, was not able to come off mute, so she would like to just make a quick comment about the interpretive center. Jackie, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Cheryl, how's my volume?
Good.
Okay, great. I'm navigating a new laptop. I just wanted to say regarding the interpretive center, Mayor, that we are moving ahead with that project. And we do need to work out a easement that is on the south corner that faces Launcher Beach. And it was an easement for the outfall pipe, which has been terminated. There is no longer an outfall pipe. And it just, kind of, there's an L-shaped bench of an easement that the interpretive center will impact. We've met with Eli and Trevor on it previously when we went over the survey. Eli has indicated and Trevor both, it's not, should not be a problem. But I'm just wondering if we need to formally get that back on the agenda or start back at the planning commission again and bring it forward? How would you, how would the council like to see us revisit that?
Eli, do you have a guidance there? Should it go, is it a planning commission first, or?
Yeah, I will check, I will check with Trevor and then also Rusty and see what the next step should be.
Okay, so we're gonna check on that and then get back to you.
That's.
Couple of days probably.
That sounds, that sounds great, thank you. And then I, when it's appropriate, I have a public announcement regarding our celebration at the harbor this coming Saturday.
Why don't you go ahead and do that now? That sounds great.
Okay, so we're excited to present our first annual Trinidad Rancheria Nerner Days. It's a celebration of the tribe's sovereignty and taking the land into trust. And it will be the inaugural, and it will become annual after that. But at 10:30, there will be an opening ceremony and public address from the tribal council. At 11:00 a.m., there will be the Talwadani Nation Cultural Dance Presentation. At 12:30, there will be Indian card game. Will be an Indian card game demonstration by Jeff Guido, a Yurok tribal member. At 1 o'clock, a flower dance demonstration by the Native Women's Collective. From 2 to 4, there will be live music by Monument Road. And from 4 to 5, there will be a brush dance demonstration and closing ceremony. So it is open to the public. There will be food and vendor booths and some children's activities. And everyone is welcome. We extend a hearty invitation. So thank you for letting me share that.
Thanks for, Jack, Jack West has a quick comment.
Jackie, if we want to tell people where they can find information about this program, we can tell them to get over.
I know Mad River Union is printing the schedule. It'll be in the union tomorrow, and it is on our Facebook page.
Sounds fantastic. I'm for one really looking forward to it. So thanks for sharing that, and we'll try to spread the word as well. I know the CERT team handed out flyers for it yesterday, so we, we're very excited about it.
Thank you very much.
All right, with that, I'd like to move to the items from the floor. At this time, members of the public can comment on things that are not on tonight's agenda. Individual comments are, you know, generally limited to three minutes, depending on our, our agenda. And please direct your comments to the council as a whole. So if there are any public comments, this is a good time to make that.
My name is Richard Keys, of course. Dr. Who am? I'm a 50-year resident of the Trinidad area. ex-business owner here and currently own two or three pieces of property here in Trinidad. If you read the North Coast Journal this morning, there was an article in there from the Humboldt County Supervisors stating that the code enforcement now is going to start implementing the removal of the communal on Charles Guards. The reason I'm bringing this up is because for the last X number of years, ten, ten, I agree, I have also owned a piece of property in Trinidad, or thirty years ago, I owned a property in Trinidad, that Charles Guards bought the old Trump seven-day address about seven to ten years ago. And so he is now my neighbor, next to my triplex there. The reason I'm bringing this up is because what is happening with code violations in the county is also now happening in the city of Trinidad. As even I will state, I mentioned this to him more than once. He wants to talk to the council members about this. I think I'm on my third building inspector of, of bringing attention to the city of what's going on there. But it's so far no avail. I'm mostly speaking because I own the property, but I'm speaking for my tenants that live there. I have three tenants that live there, a single guy, a family with two kids, and that's a lady who lives in a small town. I get text messages on my phone from my tenants about my fights going on, people bringing their cars in the middle of the night, arguing about I have permission to sleep here or not sleep here. Currently, there are ten abandoned vehicles in my front yard. There are two abandoned limousines. There are numerous homeless people that hang out in the service station and the front of lorries that camp there at night. That is zoned for a church with one resident, caretaker for a, whatever they call that. They take care of the church. But it's not a, a commune. But yet we still have people coming in at night. I had a five-thirty call last night, the fire department, an unconscious person. There, we've had numerous other calls there. I'm at a point where I'm so frustrated, I don't know what to do other than to bring it to the city council for their attention. All I can tell you is that Charlie is going to be evicted from his land up on Queiroo. And what he wants to keep, he's now moving to the church. I've got homeless camps in the forests, I've got garbage from the campers that the raccoons drag over on my property. I've got tenants that have kids that I'm concerned about drug deals and knife fights. I've had naked women coming to my tenant's house at two thirty in the morning screaming and yelling. They need help because they're being raped. I am so frustrated that I don't know what to do. But if any of you people want to come to my house and my property and see what's going on, I give you permission. Tell me where I'm supposed to go from now on. I don't know what to do. I honestly don't know what to do. I'm fearing for my kid, that my tenants and my tenants' children. And the situation is not going to get any better. The county estimates that it's going to cost over one million dollars to clean up the parcel up at the Indian Queiroo. There are fifty-five gallon drums of human waste, over numerous amounts because there's no septic up there. Does Trinidad have one million dollars to clean up my neighborhood? I don't think so. And I don't think you want to. So I'm asking, I'm begging, you know. The city must have some kind of regulations for code enforcement. I can't imagine that you can have over ten to fifteen cars abandoned in your front yard. If this was happening in the middle of town or across from any of you that live here. I apologize for my anger.
No, no apology.
I'm totally up to here with this whole situation.
I hear your frustration and it's more to a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, and, and the council, I think we need to have a quick discussion about this. This is pretty serious. So Jack, do you have comments or questions?
You had discussed this before and you had someone come up and, and we're waiting for a while, right? Do I talk to you now or?
My understanding is that the city sent a letter to Charles, registered a letter, which he never, ever, before acknowledged that he, except that, and it was returned. Then I also understood that the city was going to write up some kind of payment so they could get permission to go there with the building inspector. I, this is my third building inspector that I've been dealing with. Some time ago, I think it was Russ, you know, told me he didn't have any credible information to enforce it. He said, what I need is pictures of what's going on. I went and spent a hundred and eighty dollars for a camera and installed it up on my property and took pictures for six months. I took all of the pictures down to the, to the building inspector and said, here's the, here's the, here's all the pictures. The comment was, I don't have time to go over those pictures.
It was after that and Josh, you had lured our new inspector and then he met with you and discussed it with him.
We, yes, and that's when I heard that the city had sent a letter to Charles and Charles never accepted it and it came back and then there was something else that's going to happen. And I understand Trevor wasn't going to be involved in finding out information.
It's not.
Yeah, this sounds like one of those things, you get all the parties together.
Catch twenty-two of my life right now.
I think we, I, I'm gonna recommend that we schedule a separate meeting with Mr. Kiesel Horst, with, invite Steve Madron, somebody from Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, anybody here who are the council, the inspect, building inspector, let's get a group of Russ and let's get all the parties at the table so that we can understand what's been done, what's going to be done. And, and you know, I hear you, Mr. Kiesel Horst, this is unacceptable. So I think we need to, you know, get everybody together and see, put heads together and see if we can come up with a plan.
And all I know is that, because I thought something was being done at, when you guys saw it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that didn't get, get further than that.
All I know is that the history is in front of us. The city of Trinidad is going to be dealing with what the county's dealing with right now. If you don't stop this and step up to it.
Yeah, and I, I remember hearing somewhere about this and I didn't, I didn't have all of the information. So I, thanks for bringing it to the council's attention. I think that's the right thing to do. And yeah, we'll take it, we'll take action. I, I don't know what we'll do yet, but we'll do something.
I think it'd be good to see the progress.
You're welcome. You give me an offer on my property.
Understood. All right, thank you, everyone. We went a little over, but that's, that's something we need to spend some time on. Yeah. Yeah, that was terrible. All right, other items from the floor. This is a good time to raise these kinds of issues and, you know, other issues as well. All right, a second. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the tonight's consent agenda, bringing that to the council. Are there any questions, comments on the consent? Nope, nothing to pull or spend time on. Okay. Members of the public, anything on tonight's consent agenda that you would like to see pulled for discussion? Right, then I'll bring it back to the council. I'll move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we are ready to move to Prop 218, our first discussion tonight. A public hearing on water rate increase and consideration of adopting Resolution 2024-17, amending fees and charges for water rates. And we'll turn that over to our staff to kind of kick this off when you're ready.
So on this item, we had originally scheduled for the September tenth meeting with a public hearing. And is that meeting was canceled? We did send a second letter to all of the water customers informing them that today will be the public hearing. So we were required to do forty-five days from when you sent us the letter. So everyone got an additional two weeks, which is the you can receive five letters from my understanding. But we have Ryan, who had here in our water rate study. And she's present here, you know, she can make some comments and then help answer any questions. And I'm not sure if there's any form of way that you normally run a public hearing. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, just normally you count the number of votes as the O five. I'm here to answer questions from the public. We've discussed the water rates in some different meetings, so there's nothing to go over.
Hey, I'll start with the council. Are there any questions from the council? Further questions on water rates? I know we've had two fairly deep discussions so far, but I think to, nothing from me as well. Okay. Then let's go ahead. This is the public hearing, so let's open it up to the public. Any questions, comments, or concerns about Prop 218? Water rate increase? Mr. Davies?
You know, Tom Davies. I was one of the five people that wrote a letter. And I know this has been denied before, but our waterfront was roasting to Spanish. I had finally received the invoices for Coleman Engineering. For a million dollars. Various hourly rates were being charged. Phone calls to Gabe, phone calls to Eli. Certain people were getting paid two hundred and thirty dollars an hour or something like that. Some people were getting paid a hundred and seventy-five. This, that situation and nothing would change my mind or a number of people's minds has caused the rates to go up like this. If the city had been looking forward of working with employees and I strongly encourage the sitting council members that'll be here for years, as well as the new people get involved in personnel decisions. And how we can capture people in this town. By giving them some on-call time, money, rather than paying three-quarters of a million dollars to a consulting firm that lives in San Fernando. I firmly believe we had a few people that were very interested in keeping jobs here. Were not given the opportunity. Bone a bone. And I also heard that this new guy was like applying for the job. And also heard, the public doesn't give very much information, that there was a settlement resulting from the, this new guy's treatment of a city employee. So if you're looking at hiring this new guy, review the settlement that the city paid out some money to somebody.
Are you talking about for the chief plant operator, Tom, or you?
Yeah, the guy from Coleman. Well, this is all rumor, is, you know, so the guy from Coleman, the rumor is, is that he treated so many employees. And there was, I know you can't, but this rumor on the street, so it's out there. This could have all been avoided by offering Ryan more money, offering, I mean, the amount of money we would have spent to keep somebody would have been in this school compared to the amount of money that we've been out.
What it's for that, Ryan, who did try to offer more money, I, I think I
Well, if you guys also came, come to, you know, we had a two-three operator, widely elite, you go and discuss it, so I mean, that's the issue. That's the elephant in the room, right there.
Yeah.
Be loyal to the local people. This looks really, it looks really concerning to the, to the public that now this guy from Coleman is maybe the head, head guy in charge of getting this job. This looks really suspicious. Not that any of you guys had anything to do with it. It's public perception.
I, I completely
That's the perception that's out there. And I am astonished that only five people wrote letters because there are a lot more people that are not happy with this. I can guarantee that I've talked to a number of people. Level of distrust or city government right now is, I feel, at an all-time high. And this is the like zip on my face that's ready to pop right here. This is just a symptom of the problem.
Thank you, Tom.
Do you want me to make?
It's entirely up to you.
Yeah. First of all, there was no settlement. And, and there was no cost to the city. So we did an investigation. The resulting investigation was that it was, you know, found that a person could remain and there was not a problem. But the point is, is that the whole investigation and the cost through our insurance was all picked up through our insurance coverage. It did not cost any, and there was no settlement necessary.
That had to get to that level, if it hadn't been investigated.
Well, we've had several other things in the city that we investigate also. Our insurance provider requires any time that there are any complaints, so we turn it over to them. And then it's up to them.
I think one thing we did spend quite a bit of time on during the last two rate discussions was the enormous expense that we've incurred by having a consultant running the water plant. And then none of us are happy about it. And that, and, and we push hard to recruit harder for a new plant operator, which is why we have now candidates. One of, and I'm not gonna confirm or deny any rumors, but no decisions have been made to select any specific candidate. For example, if someone from Coleman were to apply, they're free to do so. You know, it's a public job offering. So if there were someone, they could absolutely apply. It doesn't mean that they're going to be hired. It just goes part of the process that the city will go through.
I'd like to make a comment. If I'm correct, and, and correct me if I'm not correct, since we had not raised water rates since 2017. So that's a factor that cannot be denied. Although everybody's like really sorry and upset that so much money was spent on a consultant because of the situation. But in addition, the rates had not been raised since seventeen, so they had to be raised.
Yeah, I don't worry. I included that in the letter. I understand why the rates being raised. It's a double loan.
Yeah.
Banner for a few years.
Yeah. Shocking. All right, let me, I have a hand raised, as Paulsor Carmison.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Kelly. I need some help with understanding. I was not at the last city council meeting. I had other council representatives there. Where is the rancheria falling in the rate schedule now? I'm looking at the minutes from the last meeting and it's not clear to me where we are at.
I'd have updated if you want.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
So, if that's what else. If anyone is actually here. So at the last council meeting, or maybe not the last, the last one that I was here at, it switched to a, a kind of flat base rate, so there was nothing by meter size. And so every single customer in Trinidad will have a base rate of sixty-six dollars and twenty cents per month, regardless of their meter size. So the Trinidad Rancheria is at sixty-six dollars and twenty cents per month with five dollars and eighty-five cents per one hundred cubic feet of water use.
So will you say that again? You're a little bit muffled, I'm sorry.
Yes, so every single customer in the city of Trinidad is gonna pay sixty-six dollars and twenty cents for a base rate. The last At the last um council meeting I was at, we decided, we decided to not do meter size uh base rates. So it'll be sixty-six dollars and twenty cents per month for a base rate with five dollars and eighty-five cents for one hundred cubic feet of water usage.
Okay. And that is for the rancheria as well?
Yes.
Okay. And how, what is the measurement of the water? The one hundred cubic foot, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. So it it sounds like it's very consistent with the rate increases for everyone that we're not being treated differently.
Correct. You're just uh as an outside customer, you're only seeing seventeen percent increase in base rate and a six percent increase in the usage rate. And just for people's knowledge, the twenty seventeen is twenty-five percent. Inflation has been twenty-five percent since the last rate increase, so outside of city customers here are actually very pretty well.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the um your time and additional information.
Right, other questions? Uh, you don't want to take?
Yeah, I I just wanted to make a comment, is that, uh, maybe I'm misunderstood, but I just want to make it clear that R C A C uh there was no charge for the work that they did for the rates.
Okay. Other comments, questions on the water rate study?
When would we do another water rate study?
Uh, five years.
So in twenty nineteen or, yeah, twenty twenty-nine?
Twenty nineteen, yeah.
Twenty twenty-nine.
Twenty thirteen.
I'm gonna recommend that.
I recommend it with the nine.
So R C A C definitely recommends that you look at your expenses versus your revenue every single year. And if you're finding that your revenues are not covering your expenses, you should really be doing a rate study prior to those five years. The industry standard is that you do it every five years. Uh, just regardless, but in your case especially, I highly, highly recommend that you closely look at your revenues versus your expenses every single year and see if you're on track.
Yeah, there was a discussion at the last meeting, some folks may recall, that we should have potentially raised the rates much higher to cover costs, but the discussion was, we wanted to uh allow for inflation, as Katie mentioned, and also um a run rate that did not include an exorbitant uh amount of money for a contractor. So we intentionally didn't raise rates very high because we wanted to, you know, keep ourselves within a budget. And and so that was the intent of that. We may, you know, we may have a short crawl down the road as a result, but we're going to try to be more, the idea is to be more fiscally, as fiscally responsible as we can. It's a challenge to find folks to run water plants these days. There's a shortage of personnel, and we're going out of our way to really get creative and get some good people, so. Anyway. All right, other comments, questions regarding water rates? Okay, uh, I've seen none uh anymore from the public. I don't believe we, uh, where this is a hearing, so we're not making a motion at this point, is that correct?
Adopt the resolution, yeah.
Okay, to adopt the resolution, okay.
Is it probable for me to ask the audience?
Uh, sure.
Okay, um, I I just, for my own satisfaction and knowledge, uh, Tom, I wanted to ask, you say you've heard a lot of talk. Um, and and yet people are not here, and there were only five letters or emails to uh to uh the city, so how do you explain?
I can't think for everybody else, but I think uh based on a lot of different decisions that the city council has made, um, they don't think anything's going to change and that their voice doesn't isn't heard. So for example, right now we have two trails that don't have a C V P right now. They're still closed, they're supposed to be open. Just things like that, over the years, start to add up, it makes them feel higher and higher. People want to take the time and deal with it. Stressful. You probably hear it in my voice. I mean, I sapper for seven years, seven of the most stressful years of my life. Then to come back and, you know, try to have a voice for some people that don't want to come. It's very stressful. I like living here, but I don't like the the, they'll, I don't know, we know better than you and just, it just feels, it just doesn't feel like a uh, like people are being hurt about things. I don't know. Um, you know, they become a talker themselves. That's my, that's my experience.
That's right.
Thanks for asking.
No, thanks.
All right, I'm going to go back to the adopting a resolution. So this would be a move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, amending fees and charges for water rates, so I'll move to approve.
Okay.
All those in favor? All right. All right, I'm going to move us on then to speed humps. And uh, this is an update for Ocean and View Street and the options that we're considering around speed humps. Thank you, Samantha Ryan, by the way, from R C A C. Appreciate your help.
Thanks, Samantha.
Right, good evening. Uh, Eli, do you want to kick this off or?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take it off. Uh, so I asked Josh if we could be here, um, and I got to talk with a few council members. We've got the project already going on in the, that's doing improvements to streets. And the intent is to do speed humps on both Ocean and View. Reason I asked Josh was, number one, when I was in Cape Junction, I saw what's considered a removable speed bump. Uh, but then in talking to him, he said that they also make removable speed humps. When Josh and I and Angela went to mark where the speed humps would be on Ocean and View, uh, there were four speed humps between the two streets. And uh, we changed three of them after walking around. Uh, and I was just concerned, uh, you know, that uh over time, that uh some people say that they don't like where it's located. Uh, they wish that it was moved a little further up the street or further down the street. Then they have that option to do that rather than being stuck with where they're currently going to be located. So anyway, uh, Josh will present about the removable speed humps, and then uh we can entertain any questions. I did want to note one other thing, it'd be, uh, in addition to Ocean and View, recently people says, why don't we have someone Main Street, and then also, why don't we have someone Edward Street? And then also, why don't we have them on Frontage Road, which if they are removable, uh, and we don't need them, possibly if the residents on one of those two streets say, you know, we don't need them anymore, they could possibly be removed to one of the other streets for a period of time. Uh, so so that does create some flexibility. So I'll turn it to Josh.
Right, thanks Eli, and Dave's got a short presentation up, I'll run through. Obviously, I have big questions at any time from any of you. I'm going to start off just with some basics, give you a quick overview of uh the different types of devices that we we often talk about at these meetings, so that's the speed humps, bumps, and cables. Uh, so just very quickly, starting at the top, a speed bump is really the smallest device you often see, a really typical, very low volume, low speed roadways, often in parking lots. Uh, they typically range from four to six inches in height and around one to three feet wide. And they're really, again, only suitable for very low, low volume, low speed roads, like less than fifteen miles per hour. Uh, speed humps by comparison are 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 typical of uh public roadways, again, with residential roads, often lower speed, lower volume. Uh, they're a little bit uh shorter, so three or four inches tall and ten to twelve feet wide. And they're suitable for design speeds of around fifteen to twenty miles per hour. Uh, and lastly, you get into the large, the largest device, which is a speed cable. Uh, these are for uh roads of higher, higher volumes, higher speeds, uh same height as far as dimensions, around three or four inches tall, but much wider, so uh, speed hump for ten to twelve, a speed cable is around twenty-two feet, or typically twenty-two feet wide. Uh, and it's applicable for speeds of twenty-five to thirty miles per hour. Uh, what we're talking about for Ocean and View are speed humps, and that's because Ocean View are, again, of low-volume roads and low speeds, and they have a posted speed limit of fifty miles per hour, so that will be the most applicable type of device used for those roads. Excellent. And you've all seen this slide before, it's just a brief overview of what a speed bump is intended for, so again, this is comparable for a full traffic control device. Uh, there's some advantages out there, obviously, there would be speeds right at and near the speed humps. And a lot of tendency to reduce volumes on on roads, as drivers look to avoid the roads with the bumps that are slowing down. Disadvantages, they can't push traffic to adjacent roads. They're not a disadvantage at this point in this situation, if they're actually looking to uh get non-look residential traffic off of both in Ocean F. Uh, there are some noise levels associated with speed humps, that's with uh deceleration as cars are approaching them. The actual bump, the suspension collapses, and often a little bit of acceleration. Again, I don't see that being a huge deal on Ocean View because the roads are smaller. I tend to see this more if you have wide space, wide space speed bumps on longer roads where people really have to slow down, go a little bit, and start taking off again. With stop signs and just the way these roads are, I think that's going to be a big issue here. And there are, they are recognizing slightly longer emergency vehicle response times, with any residential road, uh, fire stations on those roads, so not really a non-issue, but just want to bring it up. Contact, excuse me, next one. Uh, this is just an overview of both Ocean and View, and it identifies where we're proposing to put the speed bump. So Eli mentioned two on Ocean and two on View spaced out, uh, you know, around a third of the way. They're, uh, you can space them around a third of each side of the road. Um, these locations shown here, so we'll point out they are approximate, as Eli mentioned, we don't have to really identify the specific location. We did play with them a little bit, that's in an effort to avoid placing them right by, in front of people's driveways for strategic locations to ensure people don't drive around them. So the alternative location would be very gross, so we could play with them a little bit just before. Next one. So what we're here to talk about tonight is the material, so asphalt versus rubber. So uh, these are two examples, so obviously the left side is hot mixed asphalt. And the the right side is a modular rubber system, I'll talk a little bit about each one. Can you see it? So we'll start off with the asphalt. So this is constructed, much like a roadway is constructed, so you take hot mixed asphalt, you place it down on the roadway. It has been compacted and lifts a lot of cools, uh, and becomes an integral with the road paving system. Because of the way it's installed, it is really a permanent installation. It is quite costly to remove, uh, and that's something you want to put in as a temporary feature. As a type of construction also, it does take some effort to install, so it is much more involved with destruction as opposed to the next system I'll talk about, it does require laning and road closures typically for maybe six hours is what it takes. So construction is because you're going to have to do some prep work, actually place the asphalt, do the compaction, let cool the traffic on it. There are thousands and thousands of these, these installations across the country, so it's very much a tried method and a lot of success with them. It typically lasts around twenty years, that's a typical life of eight as well. So you go ahead and you replace the road pavement, typically ride out and replace the speed bump, so the city. We remove this. Uh, for Ocean and View, uh, it would be a twelve foot wide and three half inch tall speed bump. The total cost for each of these is around sixty-six hundred dollars, we request quotes from the contractor, this is currently working on a project, so that means they're So for comparison, this is the modular bumperized speed bump, so because of the type of installation, it comes as a modular pieces that are basically assembled and installed on-site. It can be either a permanent or a temporary installation. Uh, it's essentially bolted to the road, so holes are drilled to the road, the holes are fastened to connect it to the pavement. Uh, because of that, it can be removed and reinstalled, as I pointed out, so you could pick it out, move it around to a different location on the same road, or prior to removing, store it, place it on a different road. And because of the type of installation, really quick to install, relatively install, that's just kind of assembling the latos on the road. It is made of one percent recycled rubber, and another slight advantage is it can come pre-marked, so the asphalt or the actual pump, you have to paint the mark. It's only the rubber actually comes pre-marked, there's a little bit of cost savings there. The point, they may be easier, we have heard some reports that because of the modular construction, they're not as fixed with the roadway, you can have a little bit of extra noise with them, and also because of dismembered material as people travel with the paving onto the rubber, you can actually see a variability in noise. So maybe not loud, but just the difference in noise could be noticeable. They're, they're a much newer system, so much fewer installations, I'm not aware of any speed, modular speed humps in the whole town, even though there are some recently installed in Sonoma County, uh, but they're just, they're just not out there quite as much, so it needs to be advised, so you're going to see more of them watching. For Ocean View, if we did go to modular system, it would be a ten and a half foot wide, so just a little bit of airwork with the asphalt version because these are the standard sizes they have, I think three inches tall. Now, the cost of this, I'll point out, this is the purchase cost, not the install cost, so these are purchased by the manufacturer, they ship them to the city. It'd be about fifty-five hundred dollars per speed bump system, and installation would be on top of that. So if a contractor was to do it, it could be, I mean, you could speculate, it could be a thousand, a thousand dollars per, depending on the effort. Uh, or city public works can certainly do it, with some traffic control and the effort to get this thing set up and drilled and passing the ground with these.
Excuse me, so they, this could actually be a a thousand more than the asphalt?
Certainly. You have the fact for traffic control and then the time for contractors' labor brought there and actually due to the installation, which you did relatively quickly, but if you're looking at a few hours each, that would be pretty quick.
This uh, is this sort of a temporary thing, or once you get these, these down, are they permanent?
You know, I think you could, you could consider it either. Um, I think some agencies are using them essentially as a permanent installation. Uh, while others are using them more as a short-term installation, they test it out and if there's a change in roadway and you want to bring some attention to the roadway, you can pepper the device, or another device, or they just.
Or purchase them, they are sweet, there's no way of getting a reseller or selling them back or anything else out there.
Unless we're using, you know, the DC program.
If someone, yeah, bump market, if someone hated it in front of their house, arguably, you could be moved to the next house. But they hate it.
And the asphalt, are they, I assume, pretty difficult to remove? Like, if you decided you want to take them out, is that a major undertaking?
It it takes, you know, specialized construction equipment, so they'd like to come out and have to grind it out. So, yeah, it would also be.
A process, yeah.
If you could put these out and they're quite places in whole Canada, right?
Yeah, the the picture on the left is just installed in last month, when they were there.
So how many of the people, where you put them in, there are people come back and say, I really wish we hadn't have done that at that point?
I'm not aware of any, I I'm only, I'm only aware of the four stories, right, of agencies being, um, you know, you have potential litigation because of impacts. Those are far from, there's only one example I'm aware of, it's actually on Old Oak Road, where the speed bump in the city of an old home has soft soils and the vibrations from the home. Pressure, cost, and conditions.
They expect that.
That's the only, that's the only thing, that's the only thing I've ever heard, I've never heard of any other issues, just key installations.
And you looked at it, what you, you kind of indicated that this is a pretty good location and a pretty good way to do it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, yeah, and we talked about this, I think, at the July meeting, and giving the concerns on both Ocean and View, you know, desire to both slow speeds and discourage people from using them. Desire to both slow speeds and uh discourage people from using them to bypass. Get around, I think Trinity, I think it's absolutely a suitable. How best and implication for speed humps, and I think they would be effective.
Other questions from the council for Josh or comments?
We're considering this just for Ocean and View though, not for Trinity at this point.
You're only, I'm only in your discussion of Ocean and View.
Hey, uh well, let's go to public, let's get some public feedback on on kind of the asphalt versus rubber. Speed uh hump decision. Does anybody have any strong feelings one way or the other? Arguments for one versus the other, especially those of you who live on Ocean and View.
I have a concern.
Okay, can you keep mine coming to the mic? Just uh folks online that say they can't hear, so thank you.
So our speed hump is theoretically fifteen miles an hour, I think so this would be a good solution. Faster down the street. Um my concern with the rubber is. Doesn't go across the entire street, especially wider, wider than that in half feet.
Yeah, so the ten and a half feet is actually the length measured in direction of car travels. So would be the full width of the road, the road, I believe, though, answer your question, I think it's around nineteen feet, the modular speed hump, I think it's eighteen feet. So that was just like, you know, what it is.
So my concern would be that people are very into wheels on it. And that it's going to be, we already have a parking issue on the street, people are gonna be arsed to it or whatever, because people are. Hearing off of the road, which will cause more noise. Patients that I saw, it looks like people can't get speed, you know, they can't get top speed before they hit the first. Offcoming off of the block, because it looks like it's right at West Street, close to West Street. Then it's a little further down and they can see the white marks. I I think I prefer asphalt, it just. They don't make some just permanence of it, looks like it might be a little more. I've been across the ones and we're getting rid of them. If you're doing the right speed, it's no big deal at all.
Okay, thank you. Other public comments on uh especially from folks on Ocean and View or or even if you're not on Ocean and View, if you have preferences? I don't see any other public comments on this, so I'll bring it back to the council. Do you guys?
Did we uh, did we get um all the neighbors to sign off?
Well, yeah, I I have this as cheats. Uh I I know that there were three on uh Ocean.
Yeah, one of them was uh Tom, I didn't get, nobody was home the day. Yeah, but you you just said you were in favor, so. Yeah, so that would leave two.
Two, okay. And then on View?
Yeah, I had, I had one and we talked a lot of while and it just, I think the woman who lives. Up against him began to, was really not sure, so I think she'd be, she was, she was not bad, she just wasn't sure. Which way she would go, but she thought there might be, she thought there might be a little noise in it, um she wasn't very, wasn't a very strong opinion. So for the most part, people weren't just very interested in having these ideas, probably good ideas.
And and were there like one or so homes that you were on the view of?
I, I forget, yeah, there were a couple of homes, I wasn't sure if they were uh rentals or one star. I thought pretty much everybody goes that way.
Yeah, yeah, because the way at least Josh had indicated that it could be a owner or a resident. So it could be a tenant, but again, I think at least one of the homes is vacant, I think.
One of us, yeah, and I did talk to the owner, who did not live on the street. And she was actually more upset that we were doing those two streets before, maybe some other areas of. So I think there's actually a, I think this is a really.
And there there will be new signage put up as well, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Is signage included in the price that you put up there, it's just true to the asphalt?
That's just the asphalt, uh with separate pricing for the signs, that was just for comparison, purely.
What about the strapping, still on top of that, right?
Still on.
Okay.
Because we have fifteen and fifteen, but unless you're really looking for it.
Yeah, so um you want memory, I believe what we proposed, they'll have the regular, they'll have a sign, yellow diagonal signs, they're speed hump. And I think underneath them, they have fifteen mile an hour plaques.
No flashing.
No flashing, and we were also going to replace, I believe we're going to replace the speed signs as well. Come back and forth.
Thank you.
And and I do want to note to the council that is that uh all of, the whole cost of whichever one you choose, including installation. Will be covered by the brand.
Yeah, so I I don't live on Ocean or View, so I I feel like the only, the only, I mean, I'm leaning towards asphalt. But I don't feel like uh I should have a strong opinion on this. I mean, I I think it seems like they may be quieter, I don't envision us moving them, but you never know. I don't know, what are, what are y'all feeling?
Uh I'm gonna add that after flying up on the street, yeah, I I just, the idea of putting in these. Plastic, they just seem like a little waste. I think they, I don't think they, they seem to have, they're more, it looks like they're more extension, but these people extension. And I think the parents of those guys, I think they.
They're not super attractive. But that's what we're saying, the rubber, yeah, you said plastic, I think they're rubber, but.
It's tough to tell.
Yeah, whatever.
And the uh idea that we felt we might move the speed, if we liked them and wanted wanted speed. Also put in, it just seemed like it would be a way, totally, it's nice, I think. Uh it'd be nice to get this done on a permanent basis. And I've been over the speed humps all over the town, over the county, I don't know if I can remember them. And uh the, I think these, these permanent ones are are much nicer and much bigger to ride with, and I feel better outside. I'm not just looking for avoiding having extra cost, I put these things. Yeah, I agree.
I'm I'm, are you, okay. I think that's what we had talked about in July, but it's, you know, good to revisit if there's new information and. Uh but it sounds like the council would prefer to go ahead with the permanent installation of the asphalt. Humps and also, or humps, sorry, fumps, based on public feedback as well. All right, anything else?
The the ones that were the longest, if you noticed, what were those called?
Uh speed tables.
Are there any like anywhere, any of them in Old Town?
Yeah, I believe the ones in West Haven likely speed tables, they're much larger, larger, uh that is the. Six, 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 yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um often you see crosswalks that are raised.
Okay.
Those are speed tables as well, but then we see those on Irish people's.
Thank you.
Did you guys get your question? So we're, so there's a a request from the public to uh look at the locations of the speed humps again, just one more time.
And then also, they are marked on each with an orange marking on the, on both streets, there's two of them.
S H or?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Where, where are they, you're thinking?
Um one is down in front of cars down that way.
Right, west.
Each area.
The one is, I think in front of yours, see, is it farther, is it north of west?
Probably five feet this way.
Yeah, it is north of west.
You know, there's this, there's only the yellow mark or somewhere, it's not the same, that don't have that section on them. I just, we felt there were, there were nothing to.
Yeah.
Some are, some of them are similar, if you have to kind of look carefully.
Yeah, 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 it it it's the ones that say S H because a couple of them we remarked, that's why, you know, this whole thing up. But uh they they are on the uh west side of the street, the markings, so on the west.
I think those aren't compacting on those now, right? Remember that liquidity? You you picked that point because of, is that something you have looked at professionally, that these are problems?
Yeah, these are, yeah, they're only what we recommended just because of the spacing and.
Okay. Thank you.
And then Jack, and then we went out there, we fine tuned them a little bit as we were looking, we're drivers, we're, we talked with a couple of neighbors, understand. Murphy's, for instance, they use trucks that tend to back up, so we tried to give it that label of this, and trucks backed up.
That's good to know.
We don't have their operations as much, so we're just thinking about those, those items.
Actually spoke to some of the people in the neighborhood, we tried to put up a best case.
I appreciate that.
Someone eased over there. I'm sorry.
Where am I?
This is, this is your house, Katie, right here.
Oh, oh, I'm.
This is where the crab pots are. It's like right between your house and Tommy's house.
Yeah, that, we we did strategically try to locate, you know, a property wise as well, that's why.
It's like when people accelerate, like when they come around us.
Yeah, yeah.
And they come just around and they accelerate by yours. And when you're coming from Maine and they come up Ocean and they run to accelerate and I think it's strategic on the road. The crab pots aren't going up and down the street anymore, John.
I'd love to, you didn't see a lot of the locations?
A morning home go down our street today, Katie. That was as big as that other one, he was massive and I, he just kept going and going and going and I was getting ready to get in the car. And then he had a full-size Jeep towing. And I stood in the middle of my street and I watched him try to make the turn, got in the other train. He almost didn't get out of those, he was. I wish you'd say residence only, it's all.
Yeah. I think we talked about, we talked about having, you know, like, I don't know, I will have talked about that, but yeah, we have that sign about the, yeah. No large vehicles kind of thing. Yeah, go away.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bring the pies, dinner.
All right, I think that, I know it. I think um, I think we're asphalt and we're good to go.
Are we? Are we just making suggestions?
I I did the public comments and remarks and feedback and uh we had no more that I'm aware of. So we'll, I think we're good to go, I don't see any hands raised. If you guys do, let me know.
Which is? I think the previous council wrote from July on the asphalt, so if I can change directions, I'll wear that. Yep.
What's our timetable?
We're working on that, uh construction's complicated with two projects going on in the area. The water project is delaying our ability to do the strapping. Uh so it could be, it will be at least in one.
Okay, but it's this year.
How does that weather affect this?
It will be dry, dry day.
What is hoped for?
I'm sure.
I will thank you, thank you, that great presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Josh. All right, our next uh item is a discussion decision to appoint two council members for tribal consultation, G to G or government to government. With the Trinidad Ranjuria and the topic is uh, I believe, the vegetation removal on the Axal Lingran Memorial Trail. You had to do.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
And I know Jackie um was, that's why I was texting a moment ago, she's uh lost the internet connection, she she cannot uh join us right now. So at least, at least that's what happened a minute ago, we'll see, but yeah.
So uh, yeah, so in here we said the manchurian requested the. The G to G regarding vegetation removal on Axal Lingran Memorial Trail. However, at the planning commission meeting, uh the attorney from Ranjuria said that they also want to add the Van Damme Trail to it. Because on the agenda, we have Van Damme Trail and Axal Lingran.
Okay. Well, I met with the Ranjuria last time and um I'm happy to do it again, unless somebody else would like to join. I think Jack might be a good person since it's trails related.
Yeah, where, where are somebody, dates are we?
I don't know, is there other dates?
No dates, no dates, that's, yeah.
They're generally with the tribal council meetings and I'm not sure when that will be, it will be.
I would just, uh I I just don't think I could do anything until after the seventeenth of October, so. Box up with this program, but I don't think I have time to get anything else in for one, after that, things could be.
Okay, let me, I'm actually, unless somebody else would like to, if somebody was interested in this because.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not going to be on the council a long time, if somebody wants to begin to work with them on some of these items, I'd get a really good time to get involved. Because it is, it's just very interesting.
I would hope to, I can.
Because you're talking, right?
Yeah, I can do it depending on when it is, yeah.
Well, maybe we can, you and I can, if it comes up and and maybe we can, can we do that, just, I'd like to have Jack get involved, just because I think he, you know, he should be here, be able to work ahead.
So why don't we do um, so the myself and Jack Tuttle and then Jack West as an alternate, would that work? Or or I could go the other way around, whichever.
Not, that's another thing.
Okay, okay.
You have to figure that out.
Yeah, Jack and I were last time, maybe we'll be with them as well, so it'll be consistent with that.
Really, I'd like, I'd like to work, I mean, so this is a kind of a robust thing to work on, but so no, I'm gonna be.
Well, we'll touch base with you too to make sure that we do. We'll touch base to make sure we get the info.
Go ahead, stay ahead.
All right, um any public comments or questions? We're proposing that it's uh myself and uh councillor Tuddle, meeting with the Ranjuria for government to government. All right, I see no uh comments from the public. Uh I will move, well, I better not do it, let's have somebody else do it.
Okay, well. The chairman and Jack, the the uh. The council people. Consultation will be offered.
Okay, Katie, well, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just seen, I, maybe it's appropriate to to make them, I, we should talk about this at some point. I don't know if it's appropriate to make a motion to appoint yourself to something.
I think the three of you split heavily.
It just felt, it felt odd. Happy to do it, that felt odd, okay.
No, maybe you were, nobody, you were making the motion. Just saying.
Second.
She didn't goose me.
All right. Has a nightmare on. Okay, updated an argument in favor, in favor of measure L. Uh unanimously approved by the city council in August is our next agenda item, so this is item number four. And I will turn it over to to Eli Andor Gate.
Uh yeah, I I can turn it over to Dave since these are sitting clear and then he can explain the, the argument four. And then also, is this attached to them today? Okay, so uh what would be a mayor, so I'll take it, let's turn it over to Dave.
So this is uh, the minute I discovered that we had missed our deadline to provide the argument in favor of measure L. The council unanimously approved on this thirteen. I think that next morning I sent out a message to all the council members explaining. So. Good news is that there's no argument gets in the voter information. Gaia, there is a, the impartial analysis. So what we're. What we discussed was the opportunity to perhaps direct mail, which we're all receiving election materials now, right? Our mail offices, but correct mailing. The argument in favor of two of the council residents, the voters. To get the order. Along with publicizing it on the website and making sure that the the public understands that the council wishes to have. Been a voice in this process. So, so. We proposed the question to the city attorney and the city attorney said. propose the question to the city attorney, and the city attorney says that, you know, we had to be careful that we were not having staff or the city advocate for this measure. There's a fine line between advocating and simply stating facts. And in this particular case, the argument in favor and the analysis were very close in terms of stating facts, so what Eli asked Russ to do, our city attorney, was to evaluate the argument in favor, and perhaps revise it to remove anything that could be considered advocacy. And once we all agreed that that would be an acceptable document to mail, which is included in the packet, then we can proceed to spread the word to the public. So with that being said, uh, I, I read like, you know, kind of down, like, to like, the, the two different measures, which, uh, I, I'm sorry, the, the arguments in favor that the council authorized, and then the revised version that Russ can submitted, and I, I don't personally see any issues, I think it's, uh, he, he made some very mindful choices in removing things that could be advocacy, uh, but I think pretty good, and we wanted to make sure that you understood this, you know, there was a I think we kind of at first were I wanted you to know about it immediately, which is why I said it to you right away, and I also wanted there to be a trail in the packet council decisions and council action, because it would look very awkward when you're looking back at history, and you're looking at a decision that the council had made, that they, it never made it to the packet. So I wanted the council happy, and the council to be aware of how it happened, and the record stood.
It gave the ideas that Russ's slight rewrite would be sent out in mail to the residents of
It would be, yes, it would be, it would be sent out in using all the press, uh, uh, any, the email newsletter, you know, the website publishing, but also different that seems to be, uh, although we get a lot of people say, hey, just use the electronic, we'll, we'll do it all. But paper seems to be direction secret.
So basically, Russ and team took the document that, that, uh, Katie and I wrote, because we were assigned to do so by the council, and they made, and he made some edits, and I've looked through them, and they look fine to me, I don't know if others have had a chance to do that, but, um, they're, you know, they just add more clarification, I think, more than anything.
Some of the things, yeah, like I just, for example, was, you know, your letter said, we're glad to live in such a special place, and we welcome visitors, but got that. He says all of the city, well, Sturks, the city also recommends this, so he just sort of made it.
Yeah.
A little less hard.
That's hard, that's hard, it's getting rich.
So, yeah, basically, uh, you have both Russ and Ryan in his office, uh, Ryan i- is what he called the expert on doing some of these things that are dealing with elections. Uh, I've attended, through the League of California Cities, uh, several, uh, seminars where they talk about whenever you have a tax measure on the ballot, what you can do and cannot do. Uh, so as Gabe was saying, it's important that we're not advocating for people, and also that it is fact-based, however, it was in the voters', uh, information guide, there was the opportunity to be argument for and an argument against, but now that we're doing a mailing from the city, uh, it wants to be sort of neutral, informing the public, you know, this is on the ballot, uh, this is what it, it will do. Uh, and, and it, it's not gonna be signed by the council, uh, so it'll just be, uh, in information, what he called fact-based uh, from the city to the residents.
So does the, do you need the, the council to vote to approve this, or just is this more of an inform?
Yeah, you, you don't need to approve it, uh, you know, I mean, even just consensus that, that you like the way it is, that's sufficient.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and any public comments or questions regarding the document, or anything, uh, that anyone would like to call out? Okay, I think we're, I think we're good to go on that.
Good thinking.
Okay. The next item, uh, then, before we adjourn, is future agenda items, um, I know we discussed the Axalingren Memorial Trail for the next meeting, we want a CERT update, I wanted to mention that, I just remind everybody that CERT wants to come in and do an update. And then, uh, the Van Wick Trail, I think the planning commission has potentially asked for something on the Van Wick Trail. And, uh, Jackie, I see your hand raised, are you back online?
I finally got it.
Okay.
I'm in the meeting with the help of my IT, um, I wanted to say a few things, I believe I heard you, Mayor Cheryl, and, uh, Councilman Tuttle will be on the team for G to G.
That's right.
And then you'll, uh, we'll be looking for dates to suggest that'll work. Um, and, and then the only other thing I wanted to say this evening is any, and I, I had a good phone call with Eli, and I wanna repeat it to the council. Uh, tribal council is asking to be part of meetings, um, anything to do with the trails. Anything, you know, like if there's a field trip to go see a trail. Um, get ahold of us, all have a staff person be able to go and take notes, and it'll be probably someone from, um, environmental, you know, Ron Sundberg has gone before. But we wanna be kept up to speed on meetings. And as I mentioned to Eli, and this will be part of our G to G, we're asking that unless it has to do with the burials and the remains, that it be a public conversation. And so just reiterating that, I don't know how to fix it. But it feels like it's broken. Because there's constantly meetings that we're not invited to. So just wanted to reiterate that request again, please.
Thank you, we, I know we talked about that in the August meeting, and, um, discussed the fact that the meeting should be public unless, uh, specific cultural, um, assets were being discussed, and there was, we were supposed to be checking with the attorney about what those specific cultural assets would be that would make it a private conversation, or non-public, I should say. But there have been no meetings since, no tri management team meetings uh, since Jackie, and so I don't know, I don't, are there any scheduled right now, Eli, okay, if they're not scheduled right now, it, when we do schedule them, we'll notify the Rancho Ria. And, and it will be public unless it's, you know, that portion of the meeting that we can't discuss.
There, there are field trip meetings, and there have been trail meetings, though, that's what I'm talking about, not just the management team. But you know, if you're going to assess something on a trail, and TAS and YT are invited, Trinidad Rancho Ria should be invited.
Okay. All right, so there were, there were some field trips with the engineers, Eli, is that what happened? In the, since that August meeting, I, I
Yeah, yeah, we, we just looked at the base to see how we would have steps going down.
Okay, and this was with the engineers, but
Just with the engineer, yeah, just
Okay.
Just Steve and I.
Okay. So I do think we probably will schedule something in the near term to look at the trails. Uh, and I think we need to talk about it more in the next meeting, so, um, so we'll definitely if we invite the Tri Antosocial Society and/or representatives from the Yaroc Tribe, we will also invite from the Rancho Ria to go down and walk the trails. And there is a may get California State Parks to help with, uh, some of the work, we don't know yet, and it, but if so, they wanna wa- do a walkthrough, so that would be a good that would be a good time, potentially. I don't wanna get ahead of myself, we should talk about that in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Trails are gonna be a subject.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, other, so we talked about Van Wick Trail is gonna come up again, potentially, if, uh, yeah, same as Axalingren.
And how about the trails to the steps you were just talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, it hasn't come, right, for a while, so maybe we can get back to that, see if we can get those done?
Yeah. Yeah, we're waiting for the contract, to get the steps.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, given, uh, what we heard earlier this evening from Mr. Davies, to, you know, when we talk about trails, it'd be good to know kind of the status of the CDPs. And some of those things, and just get some of that stuff out in the open, make sure that we're crossing our Ts, dotting our Is. All right, that's all I have, any other topics you guys wanna have? Feeling done, adjourned.
Feeling very done.